Call meeting order at 7:31. All right, for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well called, please.
Patterson, here. Henderson, here. Clark.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Delakie.
Here. Approval of minutes from October 7. Excuse me. You know, I was gonna say, man, I did that in the right order. It's taken me 20 years.
So close.
Approval as agenda, as presented. If there's no changes or additions.
I'll move to approve as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, now approval of meeting minutes of October 7.
Motion to approve the Planning Commission regular meeting minutes of October 7, as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, land split applications, rema are made of real estate. So, we looked at this last week, there was some, uh, something we needed to change. I think there's something that we need to change on this drawing. We don't need a new drawing for that. There we are, here. Okay, um... So if you remember, we asked for the setback to the south of the building, parcel one, to be increased to 20 foot, that's been done. We asked the roadway to be increased to, uh, easement to be increased 60 foot. See, as I mentioned here, but, yep, okay, it's on here. It's at the, uh, the bottom of the page. So 30 foot, and we asked for the radiuses to be put in on the corners, that's been done. And we asked for the easement to go along the property line, so it goes to the southern boundary of the property, that also has been done. So... So the only thing that, um, I discussed with, I'm sorry.
I'm Rob Davies.
Okay, are you the guy that I talked to on the phone?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So would you introduce yourself again?
Yeah, I'm Rob Davies, I'm a churning foreman across, but I'm the attorney for the property owner.
Okay, so could I say Rob?
Yeah, absolutely.
So Rob and I had discussions over this, or about this, through the past month. And one of the things we talked about was the, uh, was the easement coming out onto the road. So remember, there was, there was two easements before, and then we asked for it to be one. Well, um, we've left it the way it was originally drawn, so that the original easement, or the original driveway is still there. But upon construction, it didn't, to me, it didn't make any sense to bring in a new parcel and have to go through the old driveway and have it come by their parking lot. So I wanted to separate this, so now the new proposal would have a, basically, a 60-foot easement roadway, and then the drive, the existing driveway would come into that. So that would be rerouted. So it just made more sense, and rather than have them make a roadway that's going to nowhere, we're gonna allow this to stay until it develops. So we'll just put that into, uh, into the approval. And, I don't know, somehow, you're the attorney, when, when we, when this is recorded, is there some way that we could record that, that that would be done?
Yeah, we can, we can put that right into the easement, that this will be, you know, contingent upon movement of that existing driveway to this location.
Awesome.
So they have the one access point, right?
Yeah.
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 And I'll obviously send you that easement to review with that language in it.
Okay, awesome, awesome. And then the, um, the easement that we requested, so it does say that this proposed 60-foot ingress egress and utility, but this is all the utilities, water, sewer, electric, gas, all those things.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then parcel D, which was the front section, that now has been combined with, um, parcel C, or proposed parcel three. So we didn't want to create a piece that was non-buildable, so they, Rob has created, they actually owned the parcel. Remember a few years ago, where Tony, the ordinance for the Catholic Church lives, the guy before him, split that property and made it this other section?
Yeah.
So he could access the back?
Okay.
Um, so anyway, the, the, who's it?
Rema.
Rema, Rema has acquired that, that parcel. So now what they're gonna do is take that frontage parcel and connect it to the parcel to the east of their property.
So with the refinancing, it's not involved with the property, that's like standalone and not tied to it?
Yep, absolutely.
And did you just recently acquire it? Because I was looking at the other drawing and it puts another name on there.
It's funny, the other drawing had the name, the other name from back when we first acquired the two facilities. But they acquired it, I think, a year after they first acquired these two facilities.
Okay.
We weren't aware of it, so otherwise we would have proposed this at the beginning.
Okay.
So, yeah, they've had it for probably three or four years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was just a no-brainer thing to put that together.
Makes it easy, right.
Oh, it was easy, yeah, yeah. It satisfied all our, um, wonders and just made it easy.
No, I think it looks pretty good now. Reading the letters from Rob and, uh, to everything seems to make sense now.
Right.
Well, quite frankly, I was under conversation, or on the phone in conversations with Rob and, uh, Brian Casey and also, who's roads guy?
Doug.
Doug Skyless. So we've kind of, there's many phone conversations, and pretty much all, everybody agreed on this, this proposal. And I want to thank you, thank you for being easy to work with and coming and doing this, uh, 60-foot easement. I think it's in your client's best interest to do this, but they could have balked and said, "We didn't want to do it." But in the, in the long run, it just made sense to do this.
Yep, no, fine.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't really have any other questions.
Well, there's no further discussion. Motion to approve as presented, with the village attorney going over the, um, the information that Rob provided to find us about the driveway easement.
So moved.
Excuse me?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much.
All right, thanks a lot, guys, appreciate working with you on this.
Sure.
I'll be in touch with the easement, okay?
Yeah, yeah, very well. And, and I appreciate, um, your, uh, your help with this too, because you had input too that was valuable, so.
That was good.
Yeah, it was good for both of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice. Yeah, I had pulled out the premium drawing and looking, I saw that they were using it on their property there. I looked at the old drawing that had somebody else's name on it, and I thought, well, they must have blocked that for the last couple of weeks.
Well, and as Rob said, he, they didn't even know that they, they owned it. And then when it came to the point where, you know, it was a stumbling block, then he said, "Well, hey, we have this, gee, that's a deal."
Yeah, it would have been nice to know.
Yeah. And then kind of, as Rob and I talked, he, he switched over the, the access drive. And he said, "No, that's really not what I wanted, I wanted to leave that one alone and switch over to the existing drive." So, yeah, that makes sense, so, um, I don't know how they're gonna do it, because there's gonna be kind of like a monetary thing about, um, the existing driveway parking lot. So whoever creates that new roadway could really, I think, fund that new driveway into the parking lot, but how they're gonna do that, I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't know how many feet away from the existing area it should come down, so it's not too confusing.
No.
Pull out of, pull out of that drive onto that new easement and maybe have at least a couple of car lengths before you're on the road. That'll be figured out later.
Yeah, and, and I guess I'll, uh... We'll talk to, I'll talk to the Doug and Brian about the position of that, and I'm sure we can have them resubmit a drawing.
I mean, you don't want, you have a case where you're coming down to town and you make a right and then you're making an immediate left.
Or you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to have some kind of car length thing into it.
Yeah.
Similar to like Duncan in the bank.
Yes.
You know, but they've got plenty of room to accommodate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they do.
It's, it's, it's not really that much of a deal that we even do it at this point in time. I think that's when it's done, that's the time to really draw it out. So that was a little bit of, um, phone conversation to pull that off, but it all worked. Okay, the, I've got a thing, and number seven is ordinance change, C2 outside storage. Well, that was prompted by, remember Jimmy Gullett came in, he's the Royce guy, race car guy next to you? Well, he received a citation?
Oh, what?
A letter, a letter from the code enforcer, um, about having his trailer outside in the back. So there's, the ordinance is a little confusing as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. So, it kind of says there's no outside storage, but then it says there is outside storage, and, and as long as the lot's paved, as long as the lot's screened, and you can do this, and you can do this, but you can't do that, but then you can do this and do this, so, and it's confusing, but I kind of, uh, I don't think we need to change the ordinance. I think there's sufficient grounds that he can do what he wants to do. But I was gonna talk to Brian Casey, the planner, because quite frankly, I just finalized that this evening before his meeting. But in, in section 6-506E and F... So it says, um, in E, it says, "All areas for display of automobiles, trucks, recreation of vehicles, boats and similar items shall be paved." We're gonna turn that into gravel pavement. So that's an instance saying that, okay, so there are instances when those things are allowed. Then F, the, the next item, says, "A six-foot fence, green belt or buffer strip may be required on rear and side yards." And that is also existing. So then the next part is section 18.4. So, and that's B, so B is on page 18-3. And this, the, the subject of that paragraph is approval subject to condition. So basically, it says that, "Planning permission may approve a site plan subject to one or more conditions necessary to address minor modifications to the site plan. Ensure the public services facilities can accommodate the proposed use. Protect significant natural features, ensure compatibility with adjacent land uses, or meet the intended purpose of the ordinance. Such conditions may include the need to obtain variances or approvals from other agencies." So I don't think that this is that big of a stretch, that it's gonna require a variance, but it just says that we can do something different. So then there was 1808. And then, so since our, the site plan is already sent in, it says, "Minor revision to an approval of site plan may be administratively reviewed by the building inspector." We're gonna change that, but that's how it is now. Provided that such changes do not materially alter the site, or the approved site, the design, intensity, or use, or demand on public services. Revisions to an approved site plan that are not considered by the building inspector to be minor shall be reviewed by the planning commission as amended site plan. So I think the building inspector can do just what we're looking for. Well, then the next one is, um, section 1810.
Required information for site plans?
Yes. And it, it doesn't really say anything other than, or, I don't, excuse me, outdoor sales, display, or storage locations, and method of screening applicable. So again, we're talking about an outside storage, where they're saying that there is outside allowable, outside storage. So the next and final thing that I've got is definitions, which would be on page 25-23, and it says, "Outdoor motor vehicle storage."
Would a trailer be considered a motor vehicle?
It's not powered.
No.
Okay.
So, um... So in, in this one, it's outdoor motor vehicle storage or, or dismantling junkyard. So again, it, so that, the trailer is not a motor vehicle, um, but it's unique. So it says, in one spot, it says that, "Storage trailers are not allowed." But when you talk about storage trailer, you're in transportation, you kind of notice that when semi-trailers kind of reach their age or even box trucks, they take them off trucks when they sell them. And those are used, they're no longer on the road, but they're used for storage. So they're, they're not plated, and those are, I believe, what the planning commission ordinance refers to, that you can't have an outside storage trailer for storage, because it's, it's no longer a licensed vehicle. But in this one, it specifically says, "But excluding vehicles in operable condition specifically adapted or constructed for racing or operation on privately owned drag strips or raceways. And vehicles retained by the owner for antique collection purposes rather than for storage or salvage or for transportation." So again, there is, nothing is explicit, I think, one way or the other. And I don't really think there's any way that we should say that he can't. So I guess what I'm looking for is a recommendation of the planner from the planning commission to go to the code enforcer to...
Tell him.
Resign or amend his letter.
As long as he's keeping it back, when he had it parked in the front, that was not...
Well, the, the, but he can park that, that car in the front?
No, he had the trailers up front.
He had the trailers up front.
Oh, okay, well, then I don't...
No, the car's not, not blocking any view, but when he had the trailers up front, that's, it's hard to see past there.
Yes, well, and I agree. So I only knew that he put the trailer in the back, I didn't even know that trailer would fit in the front.
He actually got two in the back.
He's got two.
He's got two trailers in the back.
No, he doesn't.
He did.
That has a, well, that has a 20 minutes ago.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's nothing back there now.
He was keeping two of them in there.
Okay.
And he had them in the front.
Well, okay, so, uh, the, the front thing, I, I, I agree, I don't think anybody in the, in the commission is gonna say that that should be allowed. But I think in the back, the, the screening to the property to the north, of which you know, has a big, nice hive, I think it's an eight-foot privacy fence, it's at least six. So it's by far, uh, adequate to the ordinance. And then the one to the east is a shorter fence, but it, it's, it's a privacy type fence also, but most of it, not 100% of it, but most of it also has a, a green belt.
I think he just did the privacy, it looked pretty fresh, the weave through the cyclone.
Correct, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, you said you're gonna get with the planner and get some kind of letter together and...
Yep.
So Tom knows the thoughts, that, okay.
Kristy?
Like I said, I said, the back doesn't really matter to me at all, it was just when they were up front. I think that would, well, but as far as the back goes, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, probably back there.
Now, do we need to make a motion that we, we turn this over to the planner for a letter to be reviewed by us?
Well, I wouldn't have the planner write the letter, quite honestly, I'd get the planner's opinion.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, yeah.
If, if, if we're not violating our ordinances, so why would he keep them there? And if the planner says, "No, you'd be fine based on this, 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 and this," then Tom can send him a letter, send him a letter stating that, you know, that...
It's been reviewed and this is...
Hasn't been reviewed, I mean, here, you know, the trailers are fine in the back, but blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
Who owns the fence to the north? The house or the...
Uh, Mr. Gold Racing.
Mr. Who?
Uh, Mr. Golds.
Oh, okay. I just wanna hike away with an eight-foot fence.
Well, Kevin, is it, is the property owners the north, do you have any objection?
I have none, matter of fact, that was kind of one of the things I was kinda remembering up, because given the fact that he is my neighbor, I don't want to have that pose a conflict of interest.
Well, if you, see, um, so as, okay, so that's something else. So we don't oftentimes see that, and I don't really see a problem with it, but, um, if the, if, if a planning commission member thinks that there could be a, a conflict of interest, so we're supposed to state that, you know, we're adjacent property members or adjacent property owners, or, uh, ask the planning commission if there is any reason why we should step down and go into the audience and not vote on a specific thing. And since you've said this, I, I, I thank you, because I've never said that before, because it doesn't come up very often.
Which is why you're bringing it up.
Yeah.
Well, he could just abstain from voting and give a reason that, "I'm the adjacent property owner," and...
The only real acceptable excuse for abstaining is if you would have a monetary gain or...
That's true, but...
Yeah, yeah. And, and the planning commission has the option to request a step down or say it's not, we don't really need it. And at this point in time...
I'm just putting it out there, so everyone's aware of the fact that, yes, I am the neighbor to the north. So there is absolutely no, um, miscommunication or confusion.
But at the same time, it's kind of irrelevant whether you agree or not. If it violates our ordinances, it can't be done.
Well, like was pointed out earlier, the ordinances are actually ambiguous.
Oh, very much so, which is one of the reasons we're going through them, piece by piece by piece.
So...
Because just as he pointed out, four or five places that allow it, I can point out three or four places that tell you it doesn't allow it, so...
And those inconsistencies, at best, we can minimize them.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's almost in, the only way, the only person that could actually do this would be somebody that, um, correlated that whole thing, and, and, I don't know, I mean, it, to me, it would be very hard to do that. None of us have the time or the wherewithal to be able to study the ordinance in that kind of doubt to pull that off. And quite frankly, the planner won't spend that much time on it either. They'll spend some time, but, um, we wouldn't want to pay for that ordinance to be dealt into at that, at that depth. So when we find it, we need to highlight it and get rid of it, and hopefully, we can find more than we miss. So I don't, uh, think we, it's not gonna require a vote, but consensus is to talk to the planner and get the planner's consensus, and then talk to the code enforcer and let him know what the planner said. So that way, it gives the code enforcer some background for his decision.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, cool, okay.
So just for clarification, I had no monetary gain out of this whole deal, so I will still be able to chime in on this issue?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we as planning, Kristy, Steve, you guys don't have a problem with Kevin commenting? I, I don't either, I see...
And I think he could discuss it all the way up till the time of a vote or something.
Yeah.
I mean, you throw some stuff out there that you think's relevant or what might that could change your mind. And I'm not just talking about this instance, I mean, something that comes up that maybe you thought about it and we didn't, and you can bring it up, but it's still abstain from voting or step down if you think it's a problem though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't see anything else that would come into play here, so I just want to make, you know, very clear on the offside that, yes, I am the neighbor to the north.
Well, it, it's, it's very hard to be in Armita and not have some kind of...
Agreed.
You know, some kind of contact or some kind of familiarity with the, uh, with the applicant. I mean, the elevator's come in to, not the planning commission, but the building inspector, zoning board of fields, and I'm the elevator's neighbor, and, um, I'm also the, uh, the steep street property that kind of got approved a year or so ago, that was, uh, I'm a neighbor to that property too, so we're just kind of, they're on the other side of the woods. So it's hard not to have some kind of contact with somebody. Okay, um, ordinance review. I really didn't think that this would go quite as fast as it did. So what do you guys want to do with the ordinance review? I didn't have a problem, we didn't do anything.
It's not a loaded question.
I agree with the lady.
I like, I like that smile.
Which one was it we were doing?
Eleven and twelve.
Article eleven and twelve.
Yeah.
So if you want to add thirteen, what next one?
Thirteen is
Landscaping, screening, buffering, building design competition and sign, signs.
I'm sorry, Kevin?
Oh, I was just, I was just mentioning, uh, chapter, excuse me, article eleven was landscaping, buffering. Article twelve was building design composition, article thirteen was signs.
And, and you're right, so the sign ordinance has just been redone. But there's some inconsistencies in the sign ordinance, so we should, we should do that one too. It will be fairly minor. We did totally rewrite the sign ordinance.
Right.
But I think once we rewrote it, uh, didn't the state or somebody come out about legal signs that changed?
No, that was before we wrote it.
Was it?
Yeah, no, that's part of our current ordinance review, we're compliant.
Right, okay.
Truly are. I'll look at that, but.
And so, um, okay, so we're skipping that in public comment?
None.
Oh, well, thanks for your attendance.
You're welcome.
Chair report. So, uh, I did have, as I said, multiple conversations with the, uh, planner, engineer and the applicant's attorney, uh, Rob, about this proposed project. And, um, quite frankly, I want to thank the planning commission and, uh, their, uh, input into this because the, neither the planner nor the engineer, um, suggested we do that roadway to the south. And to me, that was just, um, and glad you guys thought that that was a good idea to pursue. Even the applicant really liked that idea and their attorney thought that was a good idea. So that was one of the things that we put together in the plan that didn't, didn't come through anyways.
We, we talked about a roadway back through there many, many years ago.
Yeah.
For future, whatever.
Well, now with this sixty-foot easement, it's very possible that, and then with that extended back, though that was in the back of my mind, but they can do anything with that property that they want now. You know, before the way they had it, it was, okay, we can access it, but what's going to happen after that? And if they have this piece and this piece, who's going to do what? And it's going to be hodgepodge, this way it's nice and laid out, everybody knows what's going on. And, um, other municipalities have done stuff and, and I'm sure we have too. Where you develop something and the development's happened so fast, you don't provide easements for utilities. Well, so in that roadway, in that right of way, we provided that easement. Sure, it's not a really big easement for high tension lines or anything like that, which is kind of what you got to do if you're talking big projects, but still on a minor scale, I think this, this went well. So, thanks very much. Okay.
Let's do a yarn at eight oh four.
I'll second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay.